All right, North Smithfield Town Council meeting October 20th, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you start us with a prayer and a pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Bureau God?
Here.
Mr. Christopher?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Punchak?
Here.
Ms. House?
Here. Would anyone like to sign up for open forum before we start? Anyone? All right, open forum pursuant to 42-46-6D, maximum three minutes per person. Mr. McMillan?
President, President Kimberly, council members, Mr. Gibb, town administrator, good evening. I'm the post commander of Leclair, Kozic, Logan, Bassett, VFW Post 6342 here in town. I would just like to stand up here and do an invitation to the council members, Scott, and any of the participants to attend our Veterans Day ceremony on November 11th at Scotters Hall. Ceremony starts at 6:00, so I'd say get there a little early because it's 11:00, 11:00, 11:00 for the Veterans Day ceremony, so we'd like to start at 11:00. Then usually we have around 40 people there, the scouts are invited, they take part of the celebration, and afterwards they will be a free coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline Hamilton?
I just want to make sure it's not, because I'll go home and watch it again and not hear anything that's happening. Pauline Hamilton, 437 Black Plain Road. Just want to go back to the police station project, and I know there's been some discussion, there was a meeting last, well, actually, last Thursday, right, about determining which company would go forward with the bids. I'm really confused, I'm very disappointed that it's taken this long and that we're so far behind on the schedule that we had hoped to adhere to. But I believe the thing that confused me the most when I did watch the meeting on Thursday was that there was a $6 million figure that was being bandied about, and no one seemed to know where that came from. Not you, which was fine, because it wasn't something that you were presenting, someone was presenting to you, someone that we had hired and is spending quite a lot of money on, a company that's doing that, you know, from their level of expertise. And it just confused me at that point, because I wasn't sure where we were going with this and if this was going to be yet another detour in this project, you know, so that we had a dollar amount, and when I was on the council, it was incrementally supposed to be done. There was no mention of going out for bond, there was no mention of going back to people for additional costs. So I'd like you to all try to get more information. Another thing I think that would benefit you and benefit all of us as we move forward with this project, albeit, I believe, too slowly, I think if you had Eric Armey come here, when you had any meetings with anyone referencing this project, because he has all the documentation that you'll need to understand what transpired before you came on, some of you were on the council with me, others are not, so. Just a little, you know, if there's anything I can do, if there's anybody that wants to give me a call, and I might have documents that would be beneficial for you to look at, let me know, but, you know, at this point, we're so far behind the eight wall, and I think we owe it to the police department to move as expeditiously as possible, so. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item is presentation to Eagle Scout. Did you want to go to the podium so we can recognize you?
Do I have to say my name?
Yes, if you could.
Peter Croshaw, 783 Pound Hole Road, North Smithfield. Hi. I did the project at James S. Slater Park at, in North Smithfield, at the intersection of Route 146A and Route 102. It was a completely successful project with all $11,000 being used, and the remainder of the donations were donated to Troop 1139 Sladeville. Like I said, a completely successful project, we had donations range from dump trucks to sandwiches to shovels and picks, so.
Can I just want to say you did a beautiful job, and it looks amazing, so.
Thank you.
With that said, we just wanted to issue you an official citation, and just so I can read it out into the public for you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so be it known to all that on behalf of the people of North Smithfield, the town council, and the town administrator, we sincerely congratulate you on earning the rank of Eagle Scout of Troop 1139 Sladeville. This distinguished achievement was earned through a community service project at the James S. Slater Park in North Smithfield. The work significantly enhanced public access to the park while honoring the memorials and the American flag that proudly flies on site. The entire community extends its very best wishes on the momentous occasion and expresses a hope for continued success. And that's signed by the town administrator and the town council. So just want to thank you.
Thank you.
North Smithfield Town Council sitting as Board of Licensing, discussion by council vote on other action on holiday license, Queen P. Mart LLC DBA Sunoco 146 Gas and Service Station. Anyone here on that behalf? Did you want to go up to the podium, please?
I don't know what I'm going to say. This is Mohammed Rashid.
I'm sorry, could you state your name and address in the mic, please?
My name is Mohammed Rashid, 1047 U. D. Darling Highway, North Smithfield.
And this is just for holiday sales, is that correct?
Yes, yes, please.
Madam Clerk, is everything in order?
I have a question. So the date of incorporation says May 1st, 2025. That Sunoco has been there a heck of a lot longer than four months. So was the business transferred recently? And that license was also transferred? So this is just a holiday? Gotcha.
Okay. So everything's in order?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the holiday sales license for Sunoco 145 Gas and Service Station.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, discussion by council vote on other action on collective bargaining, International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local 410. Did you need to say something? So we're going to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
I'm not touching it.
You playing footsie with the cord?
Maybe.
Just, councilman, attorney Vincent Rogaosta is here, who has represented this town in the negotiations, so it may be an opportunity for him first to open up and provide an overview.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, you want to rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my motion to open a public hearing.
Mr. Rogaosta?
I promise not to bang anything.
Okay, I think we can go.
I presume you've seen a redlined version of the collective bargaining agreement for 2025, 2028. By way of background, we had approximately a half dozen collective bargaining sessions with the IBPO. Let me say upfront, after 46 years of collective bargaining, I think North Smithfield IBPO stands out as one of the most responsible, polite, cooperative, and objective bargaining units I've ever had to deal with. They addressed every issue, our proposals and theirs, with some intellectual honesty, and they agreed to some significant changes, the most important of which is a management rights clause. Surprisingly, North Smithfield had a very, shall I say, weak, almost anemic, management rights clause. We now have a clause that is very detailed in terms of the scope and breadth of management rights. And I dare say it's one of the finest in the state, including, I think, at best, the Rhode Island State Police in terms of its scope of prerogatives that management has. Another highlight is the injured on duty section. We've had a couple of grievances that have resulted in expensive arbitrations, not just because of legal fees or stenographic fees, but also expert witness fees. So going forward, injuries in the line of duty will be addressed by a so-called MAP process or medical arbitrating physician process. A number of communities around the state have embraced this process because it essentially leaves the medical issues as to whether or not an officer was injured in the course and scope of duty, and whether or not there's a causal connection to the injury in duty, and also the extent and duration of disability, issues that sometimes crop up as to whether or not somebody is indeed ready to return to duty. And on that note, fitness for duty, which is another aspect of IOD. So we now have a process by which this will be left to the treating physician of the officer and a town physician, and to the extent the two of them cannot come to some agreement, there will be a third neutral physician that will make a determination of that. Another highlight is the sick leave section. Sick leave is a provision in many labor contracts that is rife for abuse. I'm not suggesting that that is the case here in Smithfield, but what we did in our contract and what the union embraced is we put in a provision that says that you have to be functionally impaired. In other words, if you wake up with some symptom of illness, that's not necessarily enough to justify the use of sick leave. You have to be impaired functionally from performing your regular duties. So I think I've hit the highlights, there are a lot of other cleanup points, some grammatical, punctuation, et cetera. But Tony, I think, is going to go through the financial implications of this, and they all seem to be very reasonable in comparison to what other communities are negotiating. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tony.
May I just ask a question? For laypeople's knowledge, can you just provide a high-level understanding of the management rights clause? It sounds like it's a pretty impressive clause within our contract, so if we could just.
Yeah, it is. In Rhode Island, it often gets lost on some employers in the public sector that a contract is bilateral. There are two aspects, two parties to the agreement, and much of what you see in a labor contract has the rights of employees, whether it's wages, hours, terms and conditions of employment. But one must remember that management has rights. Now, North Smithfield had a contract that was entitled, quote, "rights reserved." It wasn't even entitled "management rights." So, and it was, and I'm looking at it now, a single sentence which generally set forth rights that the town has by law. But what we did is we added and we explicated and detailed the rights. For example, the rights and responsibilities of the town to supervise the operations, including without limitation, the right to hire, terminate, layoff, promote, direct, transfer, and assign employees, determining work and duties to be performed, scheduling work shifts and hours, promoting employees, establishing and maintaining performance standards for quality and professionalism, suspending, demoting, and terminating or otherwise disciplining employees for cause in accordance with the new state law, Law Enforcement Officers Due Process Accountability and Transparency Act, laying employees off, furloughing employees for either financial or operational reasons, maintaining efficiencies of operations and affairs of its police department, and determining the methods, means, and personnel by which the operations and affairs of the police department are to be conducted. And on top of that, we also have the right to promulgate rules, regulations, and general orders and policies, which the chief, from time to time, updates and issues, and address standard operating procedures at the sole discretion of the town, provided, however, that it cannot contravene any provision in the agreement. So basically, what that management rights clause does is it expands the authority of this town to manage the police department on any given occasion. And I will tell you this, that when you have a dispute that results in a grievance and you go to arbitration, oftentimes a clause like that gives you the ammunition and the evidence that you need to support your position in defending a grievance. So, again, I applaud the union for agreeing to this, because there are some unions that don't believe management has rights, particularly rights that should be spelled out with the specificity that we did.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. So I'll go through the first year of the fiscal impact. So in terms of the salary increase for the patrolman from one day to six month, six month to one year, and one year to five years, received a 4% salary increase. And then for the five years and higher, which is considered senior patrolman, they received a $3,200 annual salary increase. Detectives received a $6,279 increase. Sergeant received $5,029. Lieutenant, $6,088. And a captain, $9,273. Those adjustments were reflective to bring all those positions to the average of what all those positions are in Rhode Island. And then on top of that, they received, just for a COLA, a salary increase of 3.5%. Now you have, you have the accreditation stipend of $1,000 to any officer that qualifies. As to what the accreditation stipend is, the chief can speak more about what that entails, but the officer has to qualify for it, and then it takes significant decrease of cost on our insurance. Then we have social security, holiday pay, all the FICA, longevity, comp time, and pension. Those are just trickle effects from the salary increases. And then year two and three, we have a 3.5% for all positions across the board, and then we kept the accreditation stipend for all positions thereafter. So that's... And I don't know if you guys wanted me to go into the full impact of the estimated costs for the full year, or if you just wanted me to stick with... Yeah, okay, great. So if you can look at the top of your sheet, you have FY '25, that's the adopted budget as of last year, and then you have FY '26, that's the adopted budget as of this year. So that's 3.36 million. Then with, originally, when we were in, originally when I had created this, I had not had the FY '26 baseline, as well as the FY '26 adopted budget, but with some guidance from the Budget Committee, they thought it would be best to provide some other baseline things to show perspective. Excuse me. So FY '26 baseline, that shows the police department fully staffed, but without any raises, so what all those figures would look like, as if we had kept it even, essentially the baseline. Then we have FY '26, year one, that is representative of fully staffed, and if every, all of the positions that we have recently hired, bringing them as if they had started at July 1 of this year. So pulling them kind of backwards in time, showing what that would look like. And then you have down, kind of jump around a little bit, but down near the bottom in the notes, FY '26 estimated actual cost. That represents what I think the cost of the, oh, the salary, the FICA, the holiday will come at for this year based on the staff that we have currently, without anyone leaving, assuming no one leaves, and assuming the ones that we have transferring later this year. So, and then we have year two and year three of the fiscal impact, based on the staff that we have. Any questions? No, it's a lot of information.
If I, if I can, I know we had a discussion about this in the executive session. I just wanted to reiterate, however, a driving principle behind this proposed contract, notwithstanding all the things that Attorney Rogaosta had outlined, the concerns that we were having was the high level of officer, of losing officers of our police force. After going through this, it was our opinion, if you look at our patrolmen under five years, they're effectively compensated in a fairly equal way among competitor towns. But you start getting above that, then we start having some real discrepancies. And we at one time, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, were down six officers. That's not only problematic from an operation standpoint, but it's also a major impact on our ability to manage overtime. We said it's just not good for the town to continue to lose officers, so we tried to do a one-year step up to bring more parity, if you will, within the market, and then the 3.5% starts jumping up over that, you know, over the period of time. I just, we talked about that in the executive session, I just wanted to reiterate it as to why we're doing this one-year step up, or true-up, or whatever you want to call it.
And how many are we currently down now?
Well, in the last four months, we lost four officers to transfers, and the only reason for transferring is financial reasons. At this time, we're down three officers.
I know that we left off during our last meeting on this, that the Budget Committee needed to complete their financial impact, is that incorporated into this? Is that incorporated into this?
Well, we did meet with the Budget Committee. And the Budget Committee's initial assessment, and I know you're not here representing the Budget Committee, but, but you could probably speak to it. What we, what they wanted was our original projection was based on current employment levels. And the Budget Committee wanted us to assume full employment to get a more accurate, long-term projection. And that adjustment was made. So, the data points that you see in here were additions to the spreadsheet that I think was done between, conversation between you and Tony. The Budget Committee has, was not able to get a quorum to meet a second time on this. But we did meet with them to go through it. We made adjustments to reflect the concerns. But if you have anything else you want to add, that's fine.
Michael, do you want to get up to the... No, I mean, but you're still part of the Budget Committee, so if you would get up now.
Yeah, so I'm Michael Davis. I was going to just talk as myself, though, because the Budget Committee didn't get to meet to vote yet on the statement, so I don't know how you want me to handle that.
Can you just comment to what the town administrator was just saying, how you met as Budget Committee, and then you can get up in public and...
Yeah, so we met, we had the meeting with the chief and the town administrator and finance director. So, we had our initial meeting. We wanted to get together to actually form our own impact statement, which we have not done yet due to scheduling conflicts. So I've been working closely with Tony to, to do my best to get prepared. So I do have notes I'd like to share with you guys tonight. But as myself, not, not the Budget Committee. So, yeah, I was hoping that, I was thinking that since we still don't have the official approved statement, that it would just be the hearing tonight, so...
Do you know when the next scheduled budget meeting?
I haven't heard from DJ.
DJ had emailed me today, this evening, saying that he would hope that later this week or early next week, they could meet.
Are we able to make a vote without the Budget Committee's...
Yeah, actually, isn't there process-wise, like a three-week period anyway, or...
I don't think there's a...
I thought like we had to advertise the public hearing. Don't, we have to do it three times, or, at least, two times, no?
I know there's a wait period for when it's advertised for the public hearing, but I don't remember there being...
I guess I just have concerns, because I recall speaking about this during one of our charter review committees, that the Budget Committee did need to review this contract. That was two months ago.
I want to clarify, we did meet with the Budget Committee. And we did make adjustments to it.
We didn't get their final recognition.
The Budget Committee could not get a quorum to meet back over the revised numbers that Tony compared.
Sounds like the Budget Committee might have been waiting to the last minute to meet them. This has been two months.
So we, I, I think we didn't get the memo that the contract was ready to review. So that delayed things. That's why the last time it was pushed off, right? And then, we met two or three weeks after that. And then, I don't know why we haven't met again. It's just one, I guess, a quorum issue. So, yeah. I accept to speak as myself, but not as the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mike.
You know, I personally, I don't need the Budget Committee to tell me that you either pay now or you pay later. So we either give them a good, honest salary, where they can compare, where we can compete with the other departments in the town, in the state, or we're going to have more overtime, just like the chief said. We, he had three or four guys, you're paying overtime. And then, you're getting guys, and you're losing them to other departments. And then, when you get other people, you try, it's starting the whole training process all over again. So either you bring the salary up to an equitable salary, or you're going to pay one way or another. You pay them now, or you're going to pay for it later. It's one or the other. So I support this 100%.
Yeah, I 100% agree with you, John. It's just that we need to be in compliance with the charter. And the charter said that the Budget Committee has a process they need to follow in relation to all of our union contracts. So we need to ensure that that's done. And I'm not, like...
I agree, but we're not going to keep these guys waiting until they can come up with a quorum.
I don't know why we're still waiting. It's been two months.
And we met, we met the requirements.
I do want to clarify, no, you cannot vote tonight. You can, you cannot vote till after, two weeks after the public hearing.
So can we, do we open the public hearing even though we don't have recommendation, or do we have to wait?
You can, no, you can open the public hearing, take information. And if you want to continue the public hearing, and then you can take more information. But you wouldn't be able to vote until two weeks after the public hearing.
And it has nothing to do with Budget Committee meeting. That's just...
That's, that's your con, that's the charter which we got to collect the bargaining agreements.
All right, so...
So, motion to open the public hearing for the police contract review.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau Goddard.
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O'Hara.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
Anyone like to get up and speak on the, in the public hearing regarding...
So I have a copy of my notes, if you guys would like to see them. Is that all right to hand them out? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, so Michael Davis, 151 Douglas Pike, speaking as myself, but as a member of the Budget Committee. So, the reason I'm here tonight is, yes, we don't have the official Budget Committee recommendation. I just thought it was important to highlight the financial findings that I found on my own time as, you know, doing, reviewing the contract. Just so it didn't have to be rushed towards the end. So, I'll just kind of go through the five, the few pages that I put together. So, thank you for the overview. One thing I didn't hear was the salary implications. So Tony covered that, but I think that was a big change. So, so just top line, yes, it's three years from '26 to '28. I derived a total cost of $1.36 million, an increased cost. That comes from year one, at $256,000, a 7.5% increase. Year two, so it's accumulation over the current year, so it's higher, so it's $464,000. And then, by year three, the budget will increase by an estimated $638,500, or 18.7%. So, I can explain this math later. And I put an appendix to try to explain it in detail if you guys have questions. But you, for the average median homeowner, I estimate the cost is at $44 per person for the, per homeowner for the first year, $79 the second year, and $108 by year three. So what that means is our tax, average tax bill will go up by $108 just to, you know, fund this contract. So, a breakdown of the salary adjustments. There's the catch-up contribution amount plus the 3.5%. So I just basically converted that to percentages. So, on year one, supervisory and senior positions, so any one that's senior patrolman or higher, will get between eight to a 12, a 14.2% raise in year one. And then, over the three years compounded, it will range between 15.7% increase to 22.4%. Patrolmen, so the, you know, the lowest ranking members of the police department, year one get 4%, and year three, you get 11.4%. So, just kind of highlighting that the, the largest raises go to the, the higher ranking people, officers, sorry. So while there were the changes to the management rights and other things that Mr. Rogaosta highlighted, the administration said that there wasn't any significant cost savings from those changes to be expected. So I noted that. And then, just the addition of the, one new paid holiday, Juneteenth and stipends, will add to the budget increase as well. So, yeah, so like Tony highlighted, from the impact statement that he provided you, I have a condensed version of that on the second page. This is assuming that the department is fully staffed, meaning that the changes to this, these numbers are just purely from the contract, not from a vacancy or filling a position. Like, so it's just kind of stripping down to what's the contract costing the town. So, you can see the year one increase that, like I've already called out, the $256, $463, and the $638,000. So if you guys want to look at the next page, year three. So these are just charts that I tried to create. So, the, these are just showing you the salary increases between the three years by, by role, basically. So from first-day patrol through captain. Dollars is on top, percents on the same, on the second chart, but they're pretty much showing the same thing. So I guess what these two charts highlight is that the largest pay increases in dollars and in percent are going to those higher roles, whereas the more entry-level ones are getting the more moderate salary changes. And then, on the fourth page is really just the, that same chart, but just only for year one. So that's just showing you the first year. I don't know how valuable all of that is. And then, the, the last page is kind of how I got that calculation. We don't have to talk about it if you don't have questions about it. But I was just trying to explain how I found the $108 number, basically, of how the average median homeowner's taxes will be changed. So, personally, I'm not making an opinion on whether or not it's a good contract. I just wanted to break down the numbers that I saw and just explain to you that, how the, how this contract will affect the budget, you know, considering other expensive things coming down the line, too, keeping into account, you know, funding the bond for a police depart, police station renovation and other things like that. So, yeah, I don't know if you have questions.
So you said you based this on full, full complement, or full...
Yeah, so basically, if, on the second page, so what I, what Tony had as, I think, FY '26 baseline, I renamed as current agreement baseline. So this is basically the fully staffed at the current contract salaries and stipends. So you'll see like, you know, only $2,000 for stipends, because that wasn't part of the last contract. So it's a fully staffed baseline, and then a fully staffed year one. So the only thing that's changing here are the catch-up contributions, the salary increases, the extra holiday. One thing that this does, we did decrease, or, sorry, I decreased, with Tony's help, was leveling off overtime just on year one, under the consideration that if there were a fully staffed department, there would be less overtime. I don't have any hard evidence to show that that's true, but that was just one assumption. So if we hadn't done that, these numbers would roughly be higher by $40,000 each year, so...
Thank you for doing this. This is great.
Yeah, no problem.
Mike, I really appreciate these graphs.
Sure.
Especially the total salary increases years one through three. I have a question for you.
Sure.
And then, I also have a question for the chief that...
Sure.
Can you please work with the Budget Committee to prioritize meeting to provide a final impact statement before next public hearing?
Yes, yeah, 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 just if we can...
Thank you very much. Total salary increases, just looking, referring to this data. Chief, which roles do we see the most turnover in?
We see the most turnover in the one- to five-year police officers.
Okay.
The reason why these numbers were chosen, the catch-up pay included, because the higher ranks were collectively targeted for more of a track of fee.
More of a, of the leveling off amount of money was based on the average of a side detective sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. So where the one-through-five patrolmen were in the pecking order of the state, with the 4% raise, that would, would catch them up to be a little bit over the median. And the numbers, as far as the cash amounts, would catch up all the different ranks. So we only have two captains, we have four lieutenants, and we have three sergeants and two detectives. So, in the grand scheme of things, it was tried to bring all the ranks at one time up to a little above the median of the whole state.
Okay.
So that's the reason why. And just because a officer transfers to another agency, there's a lot that, especially interviewing the officers that left, there was a lot of contributions to that decision, state pensions, private pensions, upward mobility within the organization and the pay increments they would receive at step, top step, senior patrolman to sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. So although they didn't make that rank and they left to another department, it doesn't necessarily mean, mean that they made that financial decision based upon the upward mobility in that organization and the money they would get incrementally for getting those promotions.
Okay. Do you feel confident with these increases that we may see a decrease in turnover?
Oh, 100%. Because it's, it was, it was the main reason why officers left and transferred out of the department.
Okay.
And the numbers weren't, the, the union presented these numbers, but they were based on statistical data, based on 39 or so or less cities and towns in the state with where we, what level that we were in the state as compared to all those other departments.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anyone else during public hearing?
Mike Clifford, 489 Black Lane Road. I guess the first thing I want to say is I'm disappointed to see that there weren't some language changes that saved money. I think, I've never, really, I was in negotiations as a teacher, and I chaired the committee several times. And usually, there's some give and take. And if I'm going to get more money for something, then there's another way that the language has changed to save you some money. And I haven't heard how that's going to happen here, but the, in the, and I'm not, you know, there were some issues with the comp time that I've been bringing up for the last three years, more than that, the last six years. That comp time language should have been changed, or may, attempted to. I'd like to know if we even attempted to. Unless you think it's appropriate, and I guess, you know, there's no guidelines in that comp time language for when they can and can't use the comp time. It's kind of like cut blanche. And in some districts, it's, it's limited. And it didn't seem to me that we have anything limiting that. I know that, in last year, you know, every year I look at the salaries and I do the study to see what the highest paid was and the lowest paid was, and what the range is. And the last year I did it was for 2024, and I didn't go, I think it was 2024. Yeah, it had to be. Yeah, it had to be 2024. And they were in this, you know, high six figures, not, not high six figures, low, low six figures, from 100 and some odd thousand, all the way up to 225,000, I think it was, for the top salary person. And that's with everything in there, and I know you can include, you know, detail work and all the rest of it. But that comp time has a bigger impact than you understand. And I, and I'm going to keep going at it and going at it every time. Especially now that we've seen, nobody paid attention to it, and nobody tried to change the language. And if you did, I'd like to see what the proposal was. Because you have a situation here with that comp time language, where I looked at last, last one year, I asked the comp to the sheets for the overtime, seeing what they were doing and stuff. And I calculated from those sheets that one officer called in and said, "I'm taking a comp time day today." And he worked, and he, so we had to bring in another officer to work that shift for him and cover him, who got comp time for six hours, you know, for like one and a half times, yeah, I don't remember how. And he did it and took the day off, and he worked the detail during that shift. To me, is a little ridiculous. I mean, you're lucky you get comp time. But when you're getting comp time and you can take it so that you can go make extra money in a detail, that to me is outrageous. But I guess we don't care around here. Nobody, nobody bothers to look at it, nobody bothers to really study it, nobody bothers, you know, just, I can't understand it. I just don't understand it, and I never will. And that is going to continue with the costs. And I also, you know, the, the line about the, we're bringing the forces up to, up to the level, so it'll save us money on overtime and such. I've heard that since 2012, starting with Chief Reynolds. Every time he talked us into hiring another officer, he'd say, "It's going to cut down on the comp time, on the, on the overtime. Take a look at your overtime and how it's grown over the years." It's never gone down because we brought in more officers. Right off the bat, with these two offices that are coming in, I forget what the number is, maybe the town administrator can help me refresh my memory here, but is it 35 days off with pay that they get a year? 15, 15 holidays and other types of days come to? I thought it was like 35...
I don't have the exact number, probably.
Is it in the thirties, though, I thought?
I think so.
Yeah, I think so, too. So, you know, there's thirty-something days right off the bat, per officer, new officer, that's going to have to be covered by overtime. And they're going to probably take comp time for it. So we're going to get one and a half ti, so if they take, you know, if, it's going to end up costing us more money. And I don't think you're going to save on overtime, because it hasn't done it yet. And the overtime is created by many things. So I guess I might be curious to see if we do the study to see what did cause the overtime. Has anybody looked at those overtime slips to see what category causes the most overtime? Category of absence. I mean, you know, if I'm working an overtime shift, I have to say why I'm working it. Am I working it because someone called in sick, or am I working it because somebody, you know, they, it was a men, somebody was out on a long-term illness, or the position wasn't filled, or something like that? Any, what the reason was, and you could track it and see what is. But, I don't know. So again, aside from that, I guess that didn't make sense to me either, and when you asked that question of the chief, because I was thinking when he was talking, of the four people who left because the money was too low, where, why did they transfer out? And where did they go to? And what, what category of person it was? And then he later said, if I'm not mistaken, that those people who transferred out were in the lowest category of the step salary here. So my thing would be, well, why don't you try to increase the more for the lower step salary increase? And don't, I'm only, I don't remember, maybe they did, but I don't remember losing any detective sergeants, lieutenants, or captains transferring in other, to other locations. Has that happened? Did we lose anybody in that office?
No.
No. So they're not fleeing the pick, the, the position to see in this town because they're not making enough money. There's good and take about everything, and base salary, you know, what do we compare it to? We looked at the twenty-nine, thirty-nine districts in the state and came up with an average to see where you're supposed to be? I'll tell you, you should be looking at the, the demographics of this town and the municipal affairs office, or the, I'm not sure which one it is now. They categorize the towns as rural, urban, and then doing a little analysis of what's the average salary in a rural community. Because I'll tell you right now, if I go to Providence to be a cop, I'm going to want a hell of a lot more money than I would be if I was here. And we did that as teachers. I taught in Barville. I knew I was getting paid less than in all the other communities, but I didn't want to teach in Providence. I didn't want to teach in Windsocket. I didn't want to teach in North Providence. So, you know, that's a consideration that they make. And I think most of the people in the field feel like, you know, you've got more responsibility in those major cities with major problems. And maybe that's the incentive. You want to work in that area, go ahead. But if you want a nicer, comfortable, not a comfortable, but a nicer environment to work in with a, with a more sedate community, you, you go to this type of community. But I, again, I'm surprised to see, I'd like to know if we did do that, did we compare ourselves, we compared ourselves to the whole state rather than like the situates and the Tivitan and us and, you know, and us with you? We didn't look at the rural communities like a.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but we lost officers to Lincoln?
Yes, so the.
I just asked.
Across the spectrum, the, the departments that were compared to were, were all the departments in the ruled police departments were compared, and, and the North Smithfield Police by ranks and patrol were at the lowest spectrum of, of the state. To address some of the issues that this gentleman has brought up, vacation is pro-rata for the first officer his first year, and he incrementally works his way up through the amount of years, and it's spelled out right in the contract, upwards of thirty years when they're over, I believe, fifteen, twenty years of service. So they don't get thirty years right off the bat. Comp time does cause overtime. However, if the town had to pay cash instead of comp time, your overtime would be a lot more. So it does save for a certain amount, but it doesn't save for all. So, and I would add that the North Smithfield Police is the lower hours of comp time in the state. There's a lot of other departments that have hundreds of hours in comp time banks. We have less than a hundred. So the comp time issue isn't the main driving issue, but as far as overtime percentage-wise and statistically, it's because of minimum manning. We need amount of minimum manning per the contract to run the town. When we don't have that minimum manning on shift, we have to call somebody in to, and we have station duty, we have trans, transports for prisoners, we, we have a lot of other overtime, but the most overtime comes from minimum manning.
Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification, too, that the original proposal from the bargaining unit was to increase comp time to 200 hours. And we stayed status quo on that, and we appreciated the concessions from the bargaining unit, and we held firm on that.
Thank you.
What was the concession, that they didn't stand in strike for that?
Excuse me?
What was the concession? I missed.
They asked for 200 hours.
Well, I can ask for anything, but.
Well, that's not the point. I think it's important that this was not just a one-way street. That's the point. That's the impartion that is trying to be conveyed right now.
I also don't understand the, how that sick language is going to benefit us. I mean, I don't even understand it. I was listening, and I'm saying to myself, well, who's going to be the criteria and the judge for that? If I call in sick one day this week, who's going to ask me if I took it as, what was it? Just totally disabled or something, or instead of just sick?
Functionally impaired.
Functionally impaired. Who's going to ask me if I was sick or functionally impaired? And, and how am I going to verify that they answered honestly? That's like a nothing. I'm going to tell you every time that I was functionally impaired. What are you going to do? And then try to get, you know, is HIPAA going to be a consideration when you try to give verification of that?
There, there are forms that physicians fill out, and they address functional impairment. So it's not the officer's word. If there's any question about the legitimate use of sick leave, and whether or not the officer was indeed functionally impaired, as opposed to just having symptoms like waking up with a headache, that's different from being functionally impaired from performing your duty. That can be verified and policed by the submission of forms, and it's, it's something that is done around the state more prevalently now. So we are able to monitor the use of sick leave.
Did we monitor the sick leave now?
Mike, if you want to ask questions, I can jot them down.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, it's like, again, I'll look at it from a teacher's point of view. If we had language in the contract, everybody would say exactly what I just said and say, you know, okay, good, we'll do that. So that's giving you nothing, in my opinion, anyway. I guess that's it. There's no point. Thanks.
Anyone else want to get up during public hearing? Anyone else? You want to make a motion to table it, or continue it to?
Council President, I, I do also want to point out that clarification has been solicited. The final numbers from the Budget Committee has to be at the clerk's office no less than one week prior to the next meeting. Okay? Yeah.
So when can we legitimately have this up again? Would this have to be the first week in, or the second?
I, I think the question is, how quick can the Budget Committee come back with the numbers?
Do you want to just send us an email, and we can, then we can get you back onto the agenda?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, whenever we.
Yeah, I know you're one person. You can't say five people are going to show.
Sorry. Is that a question asked to me?
So are we tabling indefinitely?
Continuing.
Or are we tabling till November third? Continuing to November third?
To a date certain.
Yeah, if we can meet with any, I'm.
I know. It's a lot of pressure on you.
Yeah, anyway, I'll be free much before.
I just think to John's point, if we can get this done as soon as possible, so let's aim for it. So theoretically, if you need to get it to the clerk's office, it would have to be by next Wednesday. So you would have to meet prior to next Wednesday, have that finalized, submitted to the clerk?
No, next Monday. If you said a week, right? Has to be at the clerk's office a week before the meeting?
The administrator's report has to be in the clerk's office a week before you vote.
So that's next Monday.
Already provided that. Yeah, we've already met that test. The issue is the Budget Committee.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. All agenda items and reference documents are due by Wednesday.
Yeah, so we can, we can ta, table it till the third, and then if for some reason you haven't met, then we'll have to table it to the next meeting.
So we have to move and approve a statement for next Monday.
Yeah.
May I ask a question? We have a few police officers, retired police officers, a member of the Sheriff's Department here. Can I have a show of hands? How many of you guys have ever gotten punched in the face? Well, in the performance of your duty? All right. How many of you have had to go to the hospital and need stitches in the performance of your duty? I think you earned your sick leave. I, I don't think that, take that issue right off the table. I think you guys are deserving of, every day of it.
Bob Gillette, forty-nine Orchard Street. I rise in support of this. The money, we call it blood money in the profession. I was, last year, ordered to thirteen weeks from my institution, thirteen weeks, a week straight being on-call. My wife's, excuse me, my wife's right there, she can tell you what it was held. The money's not worth it. The attrition, the rollover, you pay for that, and it ends up being a domino effect where John calls out, I get held over two nights in a row. The third night, I say, screw it, I'm dimming out, which in our, in our profession is calling out sick, and it's a trickle-down effect. My agency right now, and Mr. Raghasta knows very well, we're down about forty-eight people. So deputies that work for me have to do sometimes two and three times the duty that one deputy would automatically do. We lose them to municipalities across the state. They aspire to be police officers, but we're also losing them because of the pension. Guys going to Lincoln, it's a private pension, Smithfield, private pension, or they're going out of state. You may have saw this smiling face on MSNBC recently with an investigation with Gretchen Mortensen. There's more to come on the state pension system, but I'm not going to get into that. It, it's a trickle-down effect. As far as I'm concerned, they earn their money and they deserve it. They're out there while everybody else is sleeping, they're getting punched, they're holding that hand on the side of the road with the car wrapped around the pole, been there, done that. Someone taking their last breath, been there, done that. Knocking on someone's door, telling them their kid's not coming home, been there, done that. So when we look at it from a layperson's perspective, try to put it on our shoes, try to put on our uniform and do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's continue to the third.
Okay. And then I, I do have just one question, totally curiosity, and I, since it's public hearing, not public hearing. In the sick leave, Clayton Coate, who is Clayton Coate? What is that? That's you?
That's me, sir.
Why, why is that, like, called out specifically?
At that time, I'm very glad you asked, because at that time Clayton was in the academy, and I believe it was, is that how many, how much sick time can be carried?
Maximum cap of 200 days to include Clayton.
To include Clayton, because he was in the academy, we were negotiating that contract, and everyone else under him, I believe, can only carry over 150 days now. So that's why he's specifically named in the contract.
Okay. It jumped out at me because it's not in red. Like, if it was in red, then, yeah, it was like, Jesus, who's this guy been around for, you know, previous contracts? But that was all. All right. I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on the International Brotherhood of Police Officers collective bargaining agreement until November third.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes. Discussion by Council vote on other action on consent agenda. All items on, in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A, Town Council minutes of September fifteenth and October sixth, 2025. Communications from Animal Control, monthly support, monthly report of September 2025. North Smithfield Fire and Rescue, monthly report for September 2025. North Smithfield Municipal Court, monthly report for September 2025. And North Smithfield Police Department, monthly report for September 2025. Did anyone want to remove any items from this consent agenda? No? Everyone's all set? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes. Discussion by Council vote on other action on payment of bills. Everyone has the packet? Anyone have any questions?
I have a question. On page eleven of the check register, the million six eleven, why is that circled and not the same as, isn't that usually the ACH payables?
What page again, sorry?
Page eleven of the check register. A million, total, total fund, a million six eleven. Doesn't that typically line up with the payable number on the cover sheet? Or no?
I see that. I'm just trying to make sure it's not inclusive of something else. That's just the general fund. The ACH might include, it's because the. We also include ACHs from water and sewer that we send for like bond payments. ACH is on the, on the front page?
Yeah.
Is higher? The total?
The ACH on the front page is lower, and then down at the bottom, the total invoice is a million six eighty.
Yeah, that's normally the same number. I don't know if she. Let me see if I can look up the Excel sheet of it real quick. Look at the cell reference. Yeah, I think that number is not referencing the right dollar amount. Yeah, it should be one point, one point, one million six hundred and eleven thousand three eighty, eight point three one. I just don't know why it's not the right number.
So can we come back to this, Tony? Can you look at this and we'll move on?
I'm going to give you the right number. The revised big payment of those number, yeah.
All right, let's move on to old business discussion by council vote on other action on status slash progress report items. Municipal Building Review Task Force. ECC updates. Unfortunately, I had to miss the call today. David, do you want to do any update on the call today?
So not a lot from the call. Most of the discussion was last Thursday's meeting. ECC is recommending that we award a contract to Parasol Builders. Has the construction manager at risk. The initial contract would be for pre-construction services, which would run for approximately two months. And then we need to figure out the funding source for this project.
Thank you. Can we just realign on timeline for our next meetings? So the November third meeting, we said we were going to have an agenda item.
For rec, for the recommendation or the, accept their recommendation and vote on it?
Yes, okay, for recommendations. The special meeting that we requested for the following week is going to be a comprehensive budget overview.
That's correct.
That's the tenth, right? Yep.
And then the following town council meeting, so the second town council meeting in November, actually you're going to be out.
Yeah, so we talked, we would move it to the first of December.
First of December.
And, and to go back to the question that you raised, I think we can still do that and still remain online for the, the necessary trip points in February.
Okay. So the first town council meeting in December, we'll have our public hearing for funding options? In, in, in the event we want to pursue the bond, right? Don't we have to have a public hearing for that?
We have to have a public hearing as it relates to a bond ordinance, yes.
Okay. So is, are we going to use the December, the first meeting in December as the public hearing to discuss bond? Or do we need to discuss our funding options in that meeting and then have a public hearing following?
There has to be a discussion regarding the funding options first.
Okay.
That was going to be on the tenth, right?
That's correct.
That will be on the tenth, okay. Okay. So then we'll have enough time between the tenth and then the first meeting in December to advertise the public hearing for the potential bond resolution in the first meeting in December?
Yeah, we're putting together with Bond Council right now a definitive schedule so that we can be very comfortable with the trip points that we get to where we need to get to. So we're in the process of doing that right now. Our solicitor had a discussion this, today with, with the Bond Council and we're working on that.
Okay, okay, excellent. I just wanted to reiterate that since we...
May I ask a question? Shouldn't we be, all right, so they came, they made a presentation, the, we selected, we believe it's going to be Parasol. They did their numbers. Shouldn't everything be freezing right now, just freeze right where we are until, all spending, everything just stop right now until we know for sure that this is, that this bond is going to pass? Because if it doesn't, then aren't we spending all this money for nothing?
We, we can't get to, well, first of all, we didn't vote at the last meeting regarding the selection of Parasol because of a hour and a half or hour and fifteen minute delay in when we needed to really record. So we didn't want to have any votes at the meeting. We need to make a decision on Parasol so that we can move to the pre-construction stage so we can get hard numbers. What we have right now are projections based on conversations with seventy percent of the subs. But we need real hard numbers so we're feeling comfortable with final decisions being made. And we get that out of the pre-construction stage. I think that's seventeen thousand dollars to get to that stage.
Okay.
And then on the tenth, can we make sure that Steve Maseroni is here?
Yeah, Steve, did he, was it the tenth he agreed to?
The third.
Yeah, he's agreed to show up on the third.
On the third?
That's correct.
Okay. Did we ask him about the tenth or no? Yeah, the tenth would be better because that's kind of when we're talking about all the, the funding and then we would, on the third, we would...
Yeah, I can ask him.
All right, perfect, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, update on Senior Center?
These, in discussions with Councilwoman Cristofaro, this is Senior Services.
Yes.
We're not having a conversation about Hollowell.
Correct.
I asked Ms. Tebow to show, to show up today because she has hard numbers as it relates to the participation rates in her program so far, so Linda?
Linda Tebow, eighty-three St. Paul Street in North Smithfield. We did have, are you going to talk about the, the grant that we wrote for? Oh, okay, then I won't do that. All right. When we were, we worked together on something and I had come up with some numbers just for June, July, and August. Not June, July, August, and September, because that's when we officially took over all the programming at Scouters Hall. And at that time, we're still doing paper, paper sign-in sheets, which is so much fun to tabulate. But we came up with a number that was something, and I don't have it written down because I thought he was going to. But anyways, we had something like one thousand six hundred visits to the programs that we had, that we offered there, which is, is quite a bit. The smaller groups, like the meditation classes, were especially kept at about twelve because of the nature. But we had classes that topped out at twenty-seven people at, at a class, at least fifteen, twenty people. We had mostly people from North Smithfield, but we did have people that came from Windsocket. Quite a few people came from Windsocket, as a matter of fact. So we really have had very good participation. In August, I just want to tell you some of the things that we've added. We added two extra classes, Cheer Zumba and Bar Fitness, not this kind of bar. And that, those were very well received. We've been seeing fifteen, seventeen, twenty people there. September, I think, I already told you this, we had the Senior Center at the Beef Barn, a hundred and seventy-eight people showed up. We had Chef Kevin from Blue Cross Blue Shield, has been very supportive of us. And we got good participation with that as well. In October, we had something and people, you know, I, I get these ideas and I think, you know, I try to keep it diverse so everybody will have something to do and, you know, my brain is busy. And we had Jane Deming come to talk with us and she's a humane specialist with the animal rescue of Rhode Island. And she came to talk about great apes. And I said, eh, maybe, maybe not. But it was like the lives and loves of our closest relative, the great apes. People came and they loved it. They laughed, they said, when is she coming back? And that's when we had the Pilates Ice Cream Talk and it was so much fun. Then Blue Cross Blue Shield in October as well, brought in a program, Laughter is Medicine. With the, the state of things today, you know, it's so important that we laugh because we see so many negative things. And that brought a bunch of people, I think we had fifteen to twenty people at that one. Now today, I tell you, I think of things, different things. Did you ever hear of exercise bingo? No, huh? Yeah. Well, you know, it's all, everybody knows that seniors love bingo, right? And we also know that Linda loves exercise. So nobody was going to come and just sit on their butts and play bingo in my, in, in my time. So we had it today. And in the pouring rain this morning, twenty people showed up to this. And it was the first, I told them, they were a test group because I didn't, I never saw it before. And, and it worked. They laughed, they exercised, and we really had a good time. Then we had pizza. Freedom pizza, what the heck. And that, I have to tell you, Hercules Pizza, you know, right in the front there? They provided pizzas. You know, I go and ask and they, and they were closed today. And he came, he came especially to make five large pizzas for us, you know? There are good people in this world. So anyways, that was today. And another thing that's really important, we have Guy Boulay, he's an information specialist. You've heard of open enrollment, Medicare, it's, it's, trying to navigate that is a real challenge. He starts, his appointment's tomorrow. He'll be, and he's, this is volunteer, we're not paying him. I look at the budget guy over here. We're not paying him. He volunteers. And he'll be doing this at Scouter's from tomorrow until December seventh. And he has four appointments booked for the morning. And, and thankfully I have a laptop and a printer for him to use there. And we have Wi-Fi there now, so that's really good. In November, we've got the Veterans Appreciation Dinner coming up and it's going to be at the Plastic Palace. You're welcome to come and join us if you wish. I was able to talk to somebody at United Healthcare and they've donated two thousand five hundred dollars to us to help, to sponsor that event for us. The veterans come for free and Don Carter, that's another one, it's closed on that day, but he wanted us to come on that day so he could give us his full attention. He's very generous. Veterans will be free and their guests will be fifteen dollars. So it will be the dinner. We will be doing a USO show with the Military Medley and all of that. On the twelfth, I also have Blue Cross Blue Shield is bringing in Brain Power. And that Laughter is Medicine was such a positive experience for everyone. They said, Linda, did you ever hear of laughter yoga? And I have. And, and you know, research is, is telling us that laughter is really very good for our health. It gets the endorphins going and, and, and it's important that, that we take care of stress. And so, Blue Cross Blue Shield, my friend's well there, tells me she has an instructor. And so if I can guarantee her at least fifteen people, so I'm working on that. And then another something in November, I have another vol, people are doing so kind to me. They're willing to do things for free, yay. This gal does something called Diamond Art and I don't know if you've ever seen it, but it's really beautiful. And so what we're going to do, she's going to come in and she's not charging, she's even going to buy the materials. So we can use about twenty people we have to restrict her to. And so that's going to be November nineteenth, so like for the holidays kind of a thing, you know? And then in December, we'll end up the year with Jane Deming again. She's going to do Animals and Christmas. And I'm really pleased about this one. Natalia Rodriguez is a voice teacher. She's had a business in town for a long time, Voice Studio One. And so she's got her doctorate and she's going to come and do music, music therapy. Allison might like that. Mike, tell her about it. December tenth. Alice, his wife, and I used to sing in choir together. And so she's willing to come and do that once again, pro bono. And so we'll probably have Christmas cookies. So we've been very, very busy. We have very good attendance. But as I said, just in those three months alone, there were over one thousand six hundred, something like that, visits for, you know, for our classes. I think that's pretty dang good. So that's it. Bye.
Thank you.
If I could add to that too. The, you previously were notified that we did receive a, an additional grant from the Office of Healthy Aging of twenty thousand, I think, seven hundred dollars for the program. And we've also applied for a grant through the Rhode Island Foundation for ten thousand dollars. And the only other thing is the hardware-software registration check-in system is not yet up and running because we have to find a way at Scouter's Hall to secure it. We can't just leave it sitting out. So we're going to be working with our, our crack shot, you know, our, our great Public Works Director. I didn't say crackpot. With our great Public Works Director to, 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 to make those accommodations. Hopefully that'll be up and running fairly soon as well.
Did we enable that technology yet? The badge technology?
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. My senior center.
Yeah, it has to be, it, it has to be in a secure position so that when we're not there, it can be locked up. And we're trying to figure out the best way to do that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Linda, thank you so much. And I was thinking, because I have a young child and then another on the way. There aren't really a lot of opportunities in town for classes for children or any activities for children. If you would be interested in the future, maybe hosting like a, a multi-generational activity with children and some of our seniors who are doing arts and crafts or...
Well, I do have one multi-generational coming up in June, actually.
June of next year.
June Flag Day, but it's not for little, little ones.
Mm-hmm.
I know what you're saying.
Mm.
You want toddlers?
Yeah, it might be fun to...
You know, we could come up with something like that, but the one that we, we're definitely going to do
Isn't true.
is the Flag Day celebration. And we'll be using the little scalps.
Oh, cute.
And they have a lot of families. And you know, we, we could get ninety people in Scouter's, so...
Yeah, I'll connect with you. Maybe there's some opportunity to coordinate something. I think that it would be fun for some of our little ones in town. Thank you, Linda. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the work you're doing.
Discussion by council vote on other action on boards and committee engagement. Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes, that would be me. So in our packet, we have our North Smithfield Board and Committee Meeting Series proposal. So I took all of our feedback from our discussion in the last meeting and I essentially broke it down into a series. This is not a required meeting series, I want to mention that. But just some suggestions based on the conversation that we had in our last meeting. So I know that there's essentially the state law overview that I believe the Administrator's Office will coordinate along with you, David. So I did note that here because I, I don't want to overburden a meeting with all of our state law and then talk about more of the board and committee stuff. So I think it might be helpful to have those separately to ensure engagement and attendance. I really liked the informational slash onboarding recommendation that you had, John, for more of our new board and committee members. So I was hoping to coordinate more of an informational session for board and committee members, really more so geared to new members. But also too, to prospective, you know, like constituents or residents that would also potentially like to join a board and committee. So some of our town history, I actually engaged Christian Dereside, so Natalia's son, to see if he would be open to providing an overview of some of our town history there. Projects, current priorities, long-term goals for some of our new members, really any members, but mostly new members and prospective members. How our governance works. I hate to use the word governance, but it really just means like our formal structure of board and committees. And then really what is the objective of a board, committee, commission, and then specific to each of our boards and committees. So that would be another meeting. Again, not required, but I'm, I'm really thinking that that could be more so geared to our new members and prospective members. And then the last meeting that I feel really passionate about, especially based on the groundwater protection committee's work, is it more of a strategic planning for our board committees and commissions? So I really envision this being more of a workshop where we can have our appointed officials come together. I'm thinking really chairs and co-chairs in conjunction with some of our administration. Town council's not required. I would require myself to be there. Where we can establish strategic planning. Like what does strategic planning look like for your specific board, committee, commission? I know that we said that the boards, the planning and the zoning are a little bit different, but I would like to invite them. Like I, I would like to include them in this. Start to establish goals, right? How can we actually deliver on our strategic plan? And then really make it more of a workshop. So all of the board and committee members working together to develop their own strategic plans and guiding principles, respective actions in order to deliver on those plans and principles. And then present that at a later date to the town council. I think, I know that I'm on the Groundwater Protection Committee as a liaison, but I really think that their work has been amazing. And it's incredibly important for our volunteers to feel like they're aligned with our town, with our purpose, with our projects, with our plan. So I think that this could really provide them with that format to do that. Any thoughts?
Just a quick question for David. David, what's that meeting that we, when? I forget offhand, it's been a while. When people first get on the council or they, they meet for... When people first get on the council or they, they meet for, what is that for?
Orientation.
Yeah. What is that?
The ethics.
Yeah, the ethics, yeah.
The APRA, the OMA, and the Ethics Commission.
So that, that some, that does exist already to some degree?
Yeah, yeah. I just accounted for it here.
Okay.
I just accounted for it here because I initially included that in my original proposal, but it already exists. I don't want to reinvent the wheel. So just piggybacking on that informational session.
Okay.
So if you're all aligned on what I proposed, really specific to the informational session and the strategic planning, I'd like to really start to put pen to paper on that, like get some dates on the book. I initially said December because I was being a little bit selfish and some due in January. But I'm open to Q1.
Yeah, I'm sorry, open to what?
Q1, sorry, first quarter.
No, I know what I mean.
Yeah, I think it's great, especially with the, the first one because if we start in December, if anyone's coming on to the boards or just re-upping or starting their new term, it'd be beneficial. If we could do that when like it may be December.
The state law?
Yeah.
Okay. When did we have it last year? I think this past year, rather.
I think it was January.
Was it January?
Was it January?
I think it was.
Okay.
We had, we had it before.
For the town, I think it was in January.
Okay. So we can connect on that. I mean, not that I necessarily have to be involved since it would already really be in coordination, but we can connect on that.
Just one question. So on the item one, the scope elected and appointed officials not required, not public. If there's the potential for all of us to be in the same room, doesn't it have to be public?
Has to be hosted as a meeting, right?
Hosted as a meeting.
Was the Ethics Commission meeting public?
It was public.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just didn't know. That's fine. I would defer to the law. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Tony, you ready to go back to the bills or?
I figured it out like right away.
Okay, so we'll go back up to discussion by council, vote on other action on payment of bills.
Yeah, so the 1.61 million, 1.6 million dollar number is the summation of the debt service, the general fund ACH payables, and the water and sewer payables. So if you add those three up, that's that number. Then you have the, as you guys know, the 349,000 dollar number and the $40,000 number is the first few pages, obviously. And then the library, the school, and the fire department, those are just separate payments that we send to those entities. So that's where the 1.6 million dollar comes from. So that's the debt service, the water and sewer ACH payables, and the general fund ACH payables.
So then we're saying everything is accurately reflected?
Hmm.
Okay.
He stopped for me for a second.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? Do you have more questions?
Nope.
Anyone have any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the payment of bills?
I will make a motion to approve the payment of bills for October 20th, 2025 in the amount of $4,359,863.91.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Discussion by Council vote on other action on abatements slash supplementals, Ms. St. George?
Hello.
Hi.
So first I have abatements in the amount of $8,102.14.
But I, so like, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items on here listed as tax appeal. So just because someone appeals it, like how do I make a decision on this if I just go and appeal and I say, okay, yeah, you're right? Like where is the, the substance that says, oh yeah, they are correct for appealing their taxes because, you know, whatever reason? Like I just don't understand. How can I approve a, a, a tax appeal to somebody when I don't know the specifics of what happened?
Well, you're just, I believe you're just approving the numbers. The tax appeal is what I do. So it's a tax appeal. Not everyone that appeals their taxes is granted an abatement.
So you vetted this saying, okay, you know, this account, this parcel, there was, you know, this is a legitimate appeal and, you know, I am in full agreement that these people are due an abatement.
Yeah. So when you appeal your tax, your value of your home, usually depending on the situation, if there's not enough documents provided, I'll do a site visit, I'll have a meeting with the homeowner. It depends on the situation. They're all different in their own way. But not everyone that appeals gets a, an abatement.
So of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven that are getting an abatement, how many have appealed and not received an abatement? Were there like 15 people that appealed and they didn't all get it? Or did all seven secure?
I don't know exactly how many appeals I've received. I probably received about 50 this year. And I've approved maybe 10 to 15. And then obviously if I deny it, they have the right to go to the board of review. And then that's the next process, but.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions regarding the abatements? Anyone like to make a motion?
Actually, I do have one more question. Is there statute of limitations on how far back, like something from 2020? Like is there a timeframe, like after 10 years, five years, six years? Is there a time where you can't?
So it depends on what it is. Like a motor vehicle, if the data is incorrect, then I can go back to wherever as long as I have the proper documentation. As for like supplemental billing someone or giving someone an adjustment going back on like say their assessed value, I can legally only go back six years. But are you referring to the motor vehicles?
Yeah, yeah, I just, you know, 2020.
Yeah, it's, a lot of them are from the collection agency. They just sent out new collection notices. So now we got calls on them. And as long as they provide me proof that a vehicle was registered, the same vehicle is registered on the same dates and different city or town, I mean, state, I can adjust it.
Few more questions?
That's it for me.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion for the abatements?
I will make a motion to approve abatements for the 10, 20, 25 town council meeting in the amount of $8,102.14.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. And then on your supplementals?
Next, I have supplementals in the amount of $3,453.96.
Anyone have any questions on supplementals? Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve supplementals for the October 20th, 2025 town council meeting in the amount of $3,453.96.
Second.
That's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. And just going back to your first question, I have all like backup for that. I just never supply it because you guys would have a huge stack of backup paper. But if you ever wanted to see like the backup on an appeal, you can just ask and I can give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by Council vote on other action on Department of Public Works Award of Bid for Road Salt, Mr. Penegas?
Good evening. Ray Penegas, Director of Public Works. You should have a packet for the road salt. This is a state MPA from State of Rhode Island. And they went out to bid and they have three bidders that they awarded it to. Last couple of years, we've been using, I've asked you to approve a couple of vendors. This year, there's a third one, Mid-American Salt. It's a fairly new company. So we're going to ask your approval of, to approve all three. There's a little bit of difference in pricing per ton. And the reason we do this and how it started a few years back was when we had a couple of really bad winters, we had one company that didn't have any more salt. So we, we kind of got caught in a, in a jam. So this for, this, this way here, we can move around a little bit. We've been using Eastern for the last several years. Morton's usually higher than everyone. So I really don't like to use them, obviously for finance reasons. And this Mid-American, it's like I said, is a fairly new company. Their tonnage prices are lower. So time will tell with them if they're in it for the long haul or not. But we've had good luck with Eastern. And, and right now I'm sitting on a half of, a salt shed of, of salt. So I'm not going to need any for quite a bit of a, of a while. So the pricing is on a spreadsheet, how it all breaks down in the north, northwest corner. So I'm, I'm asking your permission to get all three companies approved for this year off the state MPA.
Question. What is the difference between rock salt and solar salt?
We don't do solar salt. I mean, we do rock salt.
So that's what Mid-American is indicating, solar salt?
No, they've got, yeah. But they have the rock salt also, but not, not to the quantities that we need. And that's what I checked with, we have a person that helps us out down on the Port of Providence on this. So.
You got a guy?
I got a guy. And actually, that guy kind of helped us out when I had no salt. So just to play it safe, I'm doing all three companies.
Does anyone have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the award of salt supply contract to the three companies, Mid-American Salt, Eastern Salt, and Morton's Salt. You know why Morton's most expensive? Because you got to get all those little blue containers.
Yeah, it takes a lot to do all the roads.
So that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Discussion by Council vote on other action on Rhode Island Energy slash Verizon relocation of old Lewisquissette Pike in Mechanic Street. Mr. Penegas?
So the, I put these two together. We get these quite often from Rhode Island Energy. Anytime they put up a new pole, make any improvements to the poles. So the one for Old Lewisquissette, that was a new pole for the new building a little to the right of the CVS, that new complex there. So that goes back a few months. That pole's already been put in. The permission I need from you is to approve it so that this paperwork can be filed with the clerk's office per town ordinance. And then the second one is Mechanic Street, which is I guess a low wire. And so they were going to have to go down and raise the wires on Mechanic Street. So they need that permission granted so that that can be filed with the town clerk's office. So two separate motions, please.
Doesn't cost the town anything, does it?
Doesn't cost us anything, no. And it's like the old thing, like if Rhode Island Energy says they're going to put a gas line down the street, I can't say really no, but I can make them pave the road.
So you're going to make them do.
So the poles, they can put poles up everywhere.
Maybe they can fix some sidewalks somewhere.
Let's not go down that road. All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
So we need two separate motions?
I don't know. I would say, Dave, right?
Yes, please. Two separate motions, please.
So the first motion, I will make a motion to approve relocating a pole on Old Lewisquissette Road, for Rhode Island Energy, rather, to relocate a pole on Old Lewisquissette Road.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
She said yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
I will make a second motion to approve Rhode Island Energy adjusting a low wire on Mechanic Street.
Second.
That's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we get them to fix the pole on Railroad? When you go around the corner, it's leaning, everybody hits it. Right in front of Revive.
The stop sign?
No, it's a pole. It's a telephone pole.
Oh, the pole, that's right. They hit the pole. Yeah.
That would be a nice one to fix.
I'll, I'll put that request in.
Thank you.
Discussion by Council vote on other action on communications from Town Administrative. Mr. Gibbs, grant writing status?
Yes. First, we had been awarded a 1.175 million dollar grant back in February of 2021 regarding the St. Paul Street Water Main. We have now received a formal executed grant agreement with them. So we also have an outstanding grant request through congressional offices for a $2 million. So hopefully we're going to combine those two and finally address the issues in that area. I received notification on last Friday that the Rhode Island Housing has awarded us a $91,000 grant under the Municipal Technical Assistance Program. And this relates to the Route 146 Tax Incompliment Financing District. Those monies will be used to go to the second stage, which is actually to do market study and to come up with a land use zoning regulatory system for that district as well as to further add details in finalization of a proposed tax incompliment financing district for consideration. So that, that grant was awarded. We will be working with Caboyan Associates as a consultant. In this case, Rhode Island Housing actually picks the consultant. They give us a list of consultants we can pick from that list. This is all channeled through Rhode Island, through the state just as the grant we previously received a year ago for the zoning ordinance. So we'll be working with Caboyan, which is a consultant that we worked under the feasibility study. We have been working on Pacheco Park regarding doing a significant improvement under a grant program through the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, Open Space Recreation. There are several things going on at one time. We're actually putting a whole package together and submitting it all in total. The first phase would be to replace the place structure. We'd be moving and replacing the place structure. It would be handicap accessible. We, we met with the Parks and Rec Committee on that. And we'll be coming back to the council for, sort of that presentation with the endorsement. The other thing we're doing as it relates to Pacheco, they have as part of the Open Space Grant Program, a, a trail system grant. So we are proposing to develop a trail that would completely go around Pacheco Park. And then finally, doing upgrades to the access, both in terms of road improvements, signage, and parking. Total project cost is around $850,000. There is a match. We have the match for the place structure already. So, we're just trying to keep as many balls in the air. But DEM has encouraged us to submit for the whole thing. So, this is a major project, I think, consistent with the conversation Town Council had during the budget process. That's very positive. But I think it's important to emphasize we are working with the Parks and Rec Committee on that. We did file a grant request to, a due grant request to the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. And this has to do with Davy Brook, which is the Brook that goes underneath Mechanic Street into the pond that's owned by Munjen, goes underneath Great Road, circles around, across Green Street, then goes down to the river. We've, as everyone knows, been experiencing a lot of flooding in that area, especially Mechanic Street. So, we are requesting funding support, the maximum amount allowable is $50,000. We request the full 50, to do a complete flood management plan for that whole corridor. As an example, one would think, well, all we need to do is just increase the culverts underneath Mechanic Street, and the problem goes away. Wrong. It won't necessarily solve the problem. We have to take a look at the whole corridor because even though we increase the flow that goes underneath Mechanic Street, it still can back back up across Mechanic Street. So, we're looking at that whole area, including the section that goes across School Street, that during heavy rain periods has a tendency to flood as well. The river that it goes into actually is a Class IV river. So, we can dump as much water into that river as we want. DM doesn't care. So, we're coming up with an overall plan. We wouldn't be able to get a grant just for the Mechanic Street crossing without looking at the overall flooding situation there. So, we've asked for a grant under Infrastructure Bank. This is allowed because now we are a resilient, resilient community. So, the funding program is allowable to us. And finally, we've applied for a major $2,000 grant. And interestingly enough, we were on a, I was on a call, we have a month, a Monday call for municipal leaders. And the DM was talking about things doing. They actually referenced the town of North Smithville for this, which I thought was kind of funny. It's a major grant of $2,000. But what we want to use it for is we want to install American flags going down Main Street, down School Street to Lindy's. That's the path for the Memorial Day Parade. So, we thought that would be kind of a nice little thing to add to it. We're working with Verizon and Rhode Island Energy that own the poles just to get authorization to do this. So, we're working with Public Works on this.
So, have we reached out to the grant writer, too, to give like a monthly or quarterly?
Yeah, I apologize for that. We will do that. I've been working with the grant writer throughout all these things. But yes, we will, we will be doing that.
Madam President. I want to refer to the multi-generational grants for a moment. So, we have been awarded the four million. We have been awarded the one million?
Yes.
Okay. I know that last we spoke, well, the last time, Mr. Porter presented on Halliwell that the budget far exceeded what we had initially anticipated. I believe the administration was going to provide a review so that we can then understand more of a definitive number. And then, based on that number, we would determine, you know, budget. When can we expect to receive that?
Well, obviously, it's not on the agenda, so I can't go in detail. But I have met with Mr. Porter. And we do have a strategy
Okay.
going forward for probably a month to take a hard look at numbers. We've already looked at numbers. And I could cut three quarters of a million out of that project with not much problem. The problem is that you take a lot of stuff out of the project. However, we're looking at those numbers, and we've checked those numbers with some of my contacts in the market, developers, contractors. Those numbers seem awfully high. We don't have a lot of confidence in those numbers right now. So, instead of going forward with a draconian approach to slash and burn the budget, I want to get a confidence level as it relates to the budget numbers to begin with because they may not be as high as we think they are. So, what we are doing is we're going to go out and get a hard estimate from a construction manager who's going to contact all the subs and come up with what they say is the real number. We saw, for example, a 6,600 square foot facility in another location in the state, fairly quality building, different use. But the multi-generational facility is not really that sophisticated. Their budget came in a million dollars less than ours did. And we don't understand that. So, we're taking a pause, going out for, to get hard numbers, and then circle back on that. And I did meet with Mr. Porter. He's agreed that's a good path to take.
And then, based on obviously more of a definitive understanding of budget than we could, may need to pursue additional grants?
We're going to have to pursue additional grants. We do have a million and a half out there right now in Congress, which we all know what's going on there. We have gone through the $1 million grant that we got for Open Space. And I think we're pretty comfortable, the administration's pretty comfortable, that we could probably at least carve out $800,000 out of a million dollar grant for Phase One.
Okay.
I don't think the Open Space Recreation option there is as great as people think it is. There's a major wetlands problem there. So, I think we can, I think we can say we have about 4.8 in the bank for that. But we have a million and a half still sitting out there that hopefully, when the dust settles in Washington, we'll get some clarity. We were hoping to get that in September, October. But the way things are with the government shutdown, we're not going to get anything. So, we're still waiting for that.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions on the grants? Okay, next one is asset management program status?
Yes, we're going to want to come to the council. I'll take a hard look at everything that you've got on your docket coming up. I don't want to necessarily throw them in there on something that's a challenging agenda. But we want to go before the council sometime in November. We are going out for a request for qualifications, proposals with our onsite, our call engineers as it relates to a strategy that the Asset Management Commission has adopted, which I think is really exciting. But we'll circle back with you in November to give a presentation on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our last item is open forum pursuant to 42-46-60, maximum three minutes per person. Anyone want to speak in open forum? Jan?
Lee Anne Gillette, 49 Orchard Street. I just want to clear up and clarify some concerns and some statements that were made by members of this board at an earlier town council meeting regarding my resignation from the Groundwater Protection Committee. At no point in time did I ever contact nor speak with anyone from the media regarding my resignation. I understand there was an article in the newspaper regarding my departure. I want you to know that a reporter did reach out to me several times, asking for an interview, and I refused every single time. The article was written, and the quotes that were used must have been taken from meetings that were made public, or public meetings, that were held. But they most definitely did not come from me in a one-on-one meeting with the reporter. I wouldn't even know if that reporter walked into this room right now. As for the specifics as why I departed, I will state that I did come in on a Thursday evening with my husband. I met with our town administrator, Mr. Gibbs. And I believe we had a very open and honest dialogue. My resignation was not a shot to any one person. However, personally, when I put in about 120 hours of my time on this committee interviewing several experts, and then I come back to report the said findings to the council, and after presenting all of the research, a sitting member of the council asked, "Why are we doing this?" That made me scratch my head. The town council asked us to do the research, which is what was being reported back. I leave with one final thought. When you have volunteers that give hours upon hours of their valuable time to serve on committees for the betterment of this town and town members, when someone of a board leaves unexpectedly, perhaps you may want to think about having some type of an exit interview. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Clifford, 48 Blackling Road. I want to put in a plug for the police station. I'm hearing the language, and I've read the discussions at previous meetings. And I hear about this financing thing. It just sounds like we're trying to push this project down the road a little longer and keep it going. I want to remind you that some of you on this council, who were on the council when the $18 million bond was being pushed, were screaming at the top of their lungs about the health and safety of the police working in that building and the people in the cells who are going to hang themselves because that doesn't even recode. All of a sudden, it doesn't seem to be important to all those people. I mean, we even saw videos of all the terrible situations in that building. And yet, we're talking about, well, let's, maybe we shouldn't do the bond yet. Maybe we should wait, and maybe we should do this. Listen, you've got $10 million sitting in the bank. We paid for this once, the voters. We approved a bond and expected you to do this, Bushy and Kendall Dean. And Kendall Dean and Bushy, and that was, and the forum edition. You overspent on everything, not you people personally, but it was blown. And some of it was done intentionally to disguise what was happening. So, we got worked out of it. I think most taxpayers in town feel they paid $4 million for it. You cover that cost. I'm not paying it a second time. And the other point is, you know, I know you mentioned, too, that this, oh, those bonds, those smaller bonds are maturing, and our last payment's in 2026. So, we're going to be rolling in the money and everything. Don't count on it, folks. Look at your budget first. And there's nothing that says you have to take out a bond or go to bond, start the bond process in February. You could do it in June, June 27th, whatever, I mean, right at the last minute. I want you, I would like you to see you go through the budget process to see how bad next year's budget's going to be. You just, you had, I mean, if you think about what you did this year, you approved, if you spent $2 million this year and increased the budget, I'm just using a round number here to make it easy for myself. And $700,000 of that was because of a jump in income from tangibles. Then you, then you, where's that going to come? If you have to increase the budget next year by $2 million this coming year to keep up with the pace of it, where's the extra $700,000 going to come from? You're going to need that money from that, from losing the bond payment debt to cover your regular increases. You just approved a contract, or not, you didn't just approve it. But we talked about a contract, and it's for the police, that requires $1.3 million more in tax dollars to be raised to support that for the three-year period. Does anybody understand what that, where we're going here? I mean, you're going to have the teacher contract this year, too. You think that's going to be chump change? You're going to give money to the schools this year, too. So, why not just go in, take the money now, sign the contract with the company, do the work for the $6 million, too? You've got plenty of money in the, in the, in the fund balance to cover it. And you can always borrow the money later and then put it back in the fund balance if you want to. You can stagger, you can, you can time that better than you can, better than you are. And I think everybody's in for a rude surprise when we, when we roll up the budget this year and everybody's talking about, oh, we can take out 10, 20, $50 million worth of bond payments because, you know, we're going to be rolling the money because these two are retiring. You're not going to be there. You're not going to be there. And so, I would say, please, for the sake of the safety of everybody in that building and the officers who've been working in that, and those who cried about what a dump it was, I agree with you, it's a dump, so let's do something. Take some action and do it. And you are way, way behind in the schedule here. I meant to look before I came over, when you were supposed to be breaking ground. But it was months ago. So, the last thing I want to bring up is the Board of Assessment Review. This is totally different. But I, we had a time when we ran into the problems with the assessments, and we came up a million short one year. And they had to, you know, that caused ruckus. They put into place a practice where it wasn't one person approving the assessment reductions and the, what do you call it? I can't remember. You know, the, what you just approved.
Abatements.
Abatements, thank you. It was, we required, the council then changed it and said, "We want the tax assessor to have these abatements approved and reviewed by the, by the town council, by the Board of Assessment Review, so this doesn't happen again." And I, you know, I'm thinking, I think it was a business, I know there was a business on 146, if you recall, when you forgave some back taxes and we wrote it off. And I think one of them was for $19,000 or something like that. And it was a business on 146 that's an eyesore to the, you know, to the 10th degree. It was extensive questioning by the councilers to, well, why didn't you go after them then? And why didn't you cite them then? And why didn't we, why couldn't we get the money? And we had to write it off. And we said, oh, we have no money. That business, I just drove by the other day, and it's, and I couldn't believe how bad it is now and the garbage that's parked in there, and the cars and trucks and cranes and everything under the sun is in that yard. And here we, and I'm saying to myself, I wonder if he's paying his taxes now? Or are we letting this ride again? Does anybody on here remember who I'm talking about?
I think so.
Yeah, you were on, yeah. And Claire was on. So, I mean, are we committing that same mistake again? Can we go over there and send someone over there and say, "Clean out this shit"? Clean out this garbage? Or, you know, and pay up your taxes and start hounding them now? Or put some liens on the, on the equipment that he has on the property? So, he can't sell it with a clean title? We're going to start being more proactive and not just watch it and then wait for it to happen? Thank you.
So, do we have a three-minute rule, don't we? So, because I've seen people get shut off at three minutes, and some people get to go on forever. So, either we have a three-minute rule or we don't.
Anyone else want to speak in open forum? Anyone else?
May I just ask a question? I don't, again, pretend to understand municipal finances. But I do think that Mike made some good points about the $700,000 tangible and some other budget items that we may need to take into consideration that may impact taxes during our next budget season. I think it would be helpful if we have a financial forecast in preparation of some of these budget conversations regarding potentially going out to bond, how we may need to leverage the general fund.
I mean, we can do that, but that is so hard to do because there's, if you look at stuff that's on the planning board, asking when those things are going to come to market. We can do a guesstimate on, for example, what Rhode Island Energy's doing right now. But until we get the hard numbers on that, we can't put a value on it. We can speculate on it. We can, we can, you know, attempt to do that. But the bottom line is, it's pure speculation right now.
I mean, I think speculation may be more helpful than not having anything.
And I did reach out to the tax assessor's office. And I was asking them on Friday to start putting together some projection numbers for me. So, we are trying to do that now. But when we do that, we're going to have a lot of footnotes on it.
Yeah, and I kind of see it being more of a comprehensive process, too. Like, yes, you have your financial forecast, whether that's the next one, two, three, five years. But also, too, what really informs the financial forecast, what our current ecosystem in our municipality is, short-term, long-term projects, and any, you know, potential changes. So, I think that also circles back to our need for a longer-term plan for our town.
Yep. Fiscal advisor can help us, but they're going to rely on the data we give them. But we, we'll give it a shot. But right now, you know, we'll try to get it done, but we're up against a lot of demands right now. So, that would be done by myself with the assessor.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.